Mr. Huckkey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Hatt?
Here.
Mr. Forsyth?
Here.
And Mr. Ross?
Ah, yes. We have approval or corrections to the minutes of the April 27, 2015 Committee of the Whole meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to accept them as written.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
I don't think you can second it because we weren't, you weren't seated at that time.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Not you and me.
Exactly.
Oh.
Motion by trustee Huckkey, seconded by trustee Hatt. And then you two will have to vote present.
Present.
Yes.
Mr. Huckkey?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Martin?
Present.
And Mr. Ross?
Present. That doesn't work.
No, but the president will go with the eyes.
With the eyes, correct, so the motion is carries. Okay. First on the agenda for the Committee of the Whole is Virginia. Are you ready, or do you want to take a minute to gather yourself and then move down here?
Um, you can move down.
Okay. Gary?
Hi, how are you?
How are you? How you doing? Would you like to talk to the Committee of the Whole?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Gary Hudson from the Economic Development Committee in Planning and Zoning to give us an update on what they've been discussing.
Well, I guess I'll start with planning and zoning. It's easy, it's business as usual. Anything that comes in, we take care of it and pass it on to you guys. Pete's very familiar with what we do and things are pretty much the same. The one thing that I just want to make sure that everybody on the board knows, and until recently I thought that communication was between this board and these other committees was a little more than it appears to be. So, I just want to make sure that we try to be on the same page with you. We are pretty proud of the fact, and Pete also knows this, that from planning and zoning, I think we're, I think we're in a place where we're prepared for anything that comes along. And that's been a number of years. And, you know, the things that we've done through planning as far as how we handle annexations or anything that would, that would happen. So, I mean, you can rest assured that planning and zoning is, is prepared for anything that comes along and to handle it and then pass it on to you guys. As far as the EDAC, that's really-
Gary, just asking a quick question. Who's our village planner now?
It's still Steve Lynette.
Okay.
And, you know, we've, as you know, we've done a lot. There's still more to do. In fact, there's some things that we still haven't completed. But, things have moved along pretty good and I guess, you know, we're looking for some guidance, I guess, if there's anything else that we need to look at from a planning point of view. But other than that, it's pretty much business as usual and anything that comes in. Any other questions on planning and zoning?
Um, there was some talk about, you know, maybe sometimes planning zoning maybe puts up too many obstacles for businesses coming into town. I mean, what are your thoughts on that as far as?
Well, I can tell you that from the committee, there was never any obstacles. I don't know of a single business that, that came in where there was any obstacles that would scare them away. I mean, we did put, I mean, we welcomed them and tried to work with them however we can. We do, we do go through and put different things on, on those pieces of property though to try and make sure that they get done. And that, of course, is the time to do that. You know that. But other than that, I, I can't say that we've scared anybody away. At least, that's not my impression at the meetings that we have. And if, if anybody feels that, I guess I'd like to know an instance where they thought that was, you know. We just do our business and make sure that they have everything that they need. Occasionally, we do run into situations where I think, and maybe it's the way that we did business in the past, and hopefully that's something that's going to change going forward. We did throw up a lot of roadblocks and seemed to point out a lot of hoops that had to go through instead of saying, "Hey, we really want your business, how can we work with you?" That's what we need to be doing. Anything else? As far as the EDAC, I don't know if the new members have looked at that to see exactly how that ordinance reads or what that was supposed to be set up as. But if I could just go through it quickly. The Economic Development Advisory Committee is hereby established. This committee shall consider issues related to economic development within the village and its planning area. The committee shall consider those matters regarding potential economic development as may be referred by the Village Board of Trustees or the Village Administration. It will give such recommendations and suggestions to the Village Board on matters of potential economic development as it deems appropriate. There was a membership established. The village president picked out that board, or that, those members. And the relationship to the Village Board and Planning and Zoning Committee, the EDAC shall work in conjunction with the P&amp;Z to take the areas of the comprehensive plan related to land uses, i.e. business, commercial, manufacturing, and offer recommendations for categories, i.e. retail, restaurant services, that might establish the village's goals for future diversified market composition. These recommendations will be brought to the Village Board for consideration and review. Once approved by the Village Board, these will serve as guidelines for the Village Board and Village Administrator when seeking and responding to developers in these areas. This will continue to be an evolving relationship with the Village Board, perhaps seeking additional information from the EDAC. That was the way it was originally set up. That was the intent. And Chris, I mean, you served on that committee, so you were at pretty much all the meetings other than the last one that we had. And I guess, when that, when that committee was formed, we were looking, or I was really looking for purpose and direction. And we kind of felt that a committee like this, and, and all the people that are on that committee, that were on that committee are all positive and want to make something happen. And we really felt like that committee should be able to make something happen. And if we do come up with some ideas from the discussions that we have and pass them on to the Village Board that somebody is going to try to make it work instead of throwing up the flags and saying, "No, that can't be done, there's no money," you know. And we know that money is always an issue. But I think, we would hope, that going forward with this, that things would be a little more positive and we would at least try. So we believe that this committee should be, and I'm being the messenger here because I've spoke to the other committee members, should be in advisory role and that the Village Administrator and Board should pursue and carry out reasonable and agreed-upon recommendations. Basically, we were told when this started out that we were going to be looking at information from the Buxton Group and that we were going to be looking at that, analyzing it, seeing how that fits into Peatown and trying to make some recommendations. Now, this group has banking people, the superintendent of the school. It's a good group. And Chris knows that it's been, it was frustrating. And I knew that it was a good group. And once I got those people started in conversation, some really good things and good ideas came out of it. Where that went beyond that, you know, was somewhat frustrating also. However, the group hasn't been together that long. So, what we need for that group though is, is more direction, more information to go I struggle to come up with an agenda for that group. And I, I don't want those people to get bored. Otherwise, there's no point in that group meeting anyone. So, that's the point that I really wanted to make. We just did not receive much information to do much with in the time that that group's been together.
Gary, did you ever get any of the info from the Buxton Group?
You know, I don't know how much information there was. We did get some information. Just basically the demographic information. We did hear that there was a list of businesses that were chosen by the Village Board as possible businesses for, for Peatown. Never really knew who those were. And I know that all of that cannot be put out there. Some of that needs to be kept to the Village President, the Board, but maybe not. I mean, maybe people can help. I mean, another thing that we've asked for and still have not received is a list of all the properties either for sale or for lease in the village. And the reason why we, we were looking for that was to try to look at those properties individually and try to match them up with a business that we think would work well there. And then go talk to somebody that we think is interested in that type of business, or somebody that's thinking about it. You know, we all get around, we meet people, we hear stuff. And if, if we knew that we had the space available, I mean, we're all familiar with Peatown, we live in Peatown, we're kind of familiar. We don't know the size of the properties. If we had that, we could take a look at it and say, "Okay, this is a great spot for these businesses." So, where can we find those businesses? Who can we talk to? And that's something that I don't think we really, we really entertained in Peatown is to actually go out and promote.
Right. That's what we, that's absolutely what we need to do. I mean-
Who did you request that information from here?
The Village Administrator and the Village President.
I certainly have not contacted about any available rental space.
No, the reason I asked about the Buxton Group-
Chris, you kind of, you remember that, don't you? Let's start from there.
The reason I asked about the Buxton Group is I know trustee Huckkey and myself have asked for two years and we, we still have never even gotten anything.
Well, it's, it's come to light here recently that maybe we never got all the information that we were supposed to get.
And I'm, I'm still, I'm still trying to get somebody to call me back and to try to catch up-
Right.
-on what's going on. So I will continue to pursue that. I don't have any information. I'm, I'm still trying to gather that information right now.
And what we got was the spreadsheets and, I mean-
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, this is it.
That's what we got, but yet we sent them another check for thirty-plus thousand dollars, didn't we? For the second year of that?
No, that was, that was the total, was it not? I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and-
It was between sixty and seventy thousand. It was a two-year program, wasn't it?
I was told that there was a part two, that there was supposed to be a presentation to you guys. And I don't, it never happened, I don't think. So-
I will continue to pursue that.
We need to rattle the cage.
Oh, absolutely.
We paid for it and if it's there, there isn't any reason why they shouldn't give it to us.
Absolutely.
Where are these guys out of?
Texas.
Oh, Texas.
So, one of the things, you know, that was talked about at the meeting, you know, the other, the other night, was water and sewer to the other side of 57. And to me, that's, you know, a thing that's been a long time coming. I did have a meeting with the village engineer, I think the day after, you know, that meeting. And he was going to pull out, you know, some files and so forth of information that they have, you know, from looking at that, just trying to start that discussion again and see, you know, what the cost would be, you know, for us to at least start making that attempt.
We think we should, you know, Gary wants a list of, you know, land that's for sale or businesses for rent or buildings for rent. I mean, what about just going to talk to a landowner and saying, you know, "Hey, what would it take for you to, you know?"
Well, look, yeah, actually, out of these meetings, and what I did was, because I, I got to a point where I didn't have an agenda. And, and we had a meeting coming up and we, we had no, I had nothing from the villagers to put on that agenda. So what I started to do is I started to do some research on my own. And I, I started looking at different towns. I mean, I got as much information as I could about Peatown. And I started looking at different towns and villages that were very similar to us around the country. And I found some. However, I ran into a situation where maybe they had a, a small college, you know, or maybe they had a, a lake with boating and fishing. And so I had to get to the ones that were a village our size on an interstate, and then I had something. And we actually looked at one from Davidson, from North Carolina, just north of Charlotte. And it was interesting to look at that because twenty years ago, they were very similar to us. And, and they did some things because the sprawl in their situation was coming their way. Now, the reason I did that is because I was hoping that it would give us some ideas of what other people did so it would open up some ideas and start some communication with this group. It worked. It, it, we had some great discussion and I felt like we were heading in some areas that maybe we haven't talked about. I mean, we all like to talk about Peatown and what we'd like it to be or what we hope for, but we were actually talking about things that could possibly happen. And that's really what led to the idea of the industrial park. That came from that committee. And it was like, what do we not have? What do we need? We need people. We need people to use our services. We need people that stay here during the day. Who are our biggest employers? It happens to be the school district. You know, we've got restaurants in town, but the teachers and stuff don't really leave the school. They eat their lunch there. So, what do we need? We need businesses, and sure, we'd like to have the restaurants and stuff like that, but those don't really, that's not really a lot of employees. We need the businesses that have twenty-five to fifty employees. So when you talk about that, you start looking at light industrial, industrial. We've got a lot of land. And in the past, I always hear, "Well, yeah, we had this, we had that, but the land's too expensive." Have we really talked to somebody though? Have we really taken, have we really taken the area and taken a look at it where some of these things could work? And the other idea that came out of that was, okay, we can't probably do that ourselves. We probably need to talk to commercial brokers or industrial brokers, professional people that can approach landowners, paint a picture for them, even do appraisals. Because sure, everybody thinks their land is worth something, but as you all know, it comes down to the appraised value. And maybe, maybe it needs to be realistic in that way. So, that's kind of how we came up with, you know, we talked about that and, I mean, I can tell you that I, I personally was directed by, by the village president and the village administrator to contact a couple of brokers, invite them to lunch, talk about the idea, let them know that, hey, Peatown's interested in doing this. I did not do it. I wanted to wait until this industrial site thing. I mean, we really need to talk about a direction and a piece of property that's, fits in our comprehensive plan and we haven't gotten to that point yet. But yeah, Pete, that, that's exactly what we need to do. We need to talk to those people because that's, that's their profession.
I think we need to get verification on these twenty, what was it, twenty-five letters that were supposedly sent out to the twenty-five different businesses?
Was it twenty or twenty-five?
I thought it was twenty-five. Anywhere from Eighty-Five Fitness, Arby's, Big Boy-
Yeah.
Chick-fil-A, Cinnabon, all these that fell in our demographic according to the study. You know, there was information that they were telling us that would be helpful, there are dealerships, what trucks they could sell, not could sell, what sells in our area based on sales in the last ten years.
I'm going to try to get somebody from the Buxton to come here and talk to the Village Board. I mean, I think that's the only way we're going to get the answers, you know, that we want or that we need.
I mean, there was, we got these spreadsheets and there was a slew of information on these, but it was all generic, you know?
Well, that's why I said, I think we need somebody here face-to-face with the Board.
We fit the sports utility, family demographic, the stock cars, the state, uh, stock cars, the state parks, traditional conservative baby boomers, NASCAR. I mean, there were so many things that they were giving us based on-
But that type of information, to me, can be handed to a number of different villages. You know, I mean, it may not necessarily be-
It's, according to them, it's based on our credit card sale.
No, I understand according to them, but again, I would like to have somebody from that organization here where the questions that the Board needs answered, you know, can be asked to them directly. And, and your group. So we will try to get that set up as soon as possible.
Yeah, we tried to persevere and be dedicated.
Yep, keep persevering. How would we go up-
It's been difficult the last few years.
Well, I understand.
But you know what? I'm very proud of the things that, and when Pete was on Planning and Zoning and I was on, I'm very proud of the things that we've got in place. And I, I can tell you, as far as I'm concerned, whatever comes in, I don't care how big it is, who it is, we've got things in place to handle it.
Absolutely.
I mean, it may take many, many meetings to work it out, but we've, we've got, we've got it all in place. And I do like our village planner. He's got a lot of experience and-
Steve has always been very knowledgeable and very, very good at bringing information, you know, to the Board or to whatever group that he's working with.
So, yeah, I guess we, you know, everybody's positive. We want to keep going. We just need some content, we need some things to, to work on.
I'm trying to think of the best way to get this list of properties, you know, for lease or sale. I don't know if we would have, besides going around and making a list of the, of the properties in town and then looking up who owns them.
I don't know if you could go through, maybe one of the realtors or something could help out with that.
They would have printouts and things on things that are for sale.
The taxes, yes.
I don't know if she'd know what's for sale.
Right.
I mean, we see the buildings.
Right, exactly.
We know a little bit about it.
Right.
But we don't know enough about it to actually analyze it and say, "Gosh, this would be a great place for this business. Let's make a couple of phone calls," you know?
Okay. We'll definitely work on getting that list put together.
So what do you need to start to talk to a commercial broker?
I think what we need to do is we need to, and that's really from that meeting that you, our last meeting. I wanted to really look at, how do you go about establishing a piece of property as being the best suited for this or that? I don't know that we have enough information on that. I was hoping that Steve had a friend that actually developed industrial sites.
Steve Lynette?
Steve Lynette. And he tried to get him to that meeting and he couldn't make it. Steve talked to him. He tried to bring that information to us. It seemed that in their conversation, they were looking west. And so he, he, really, that was a big deal for him. Well, at first, he was kind of pointing out that, you know, if you get an airport, you get the Iliana. Of course, we know that, I don't know that we're going to have to work that hard to get people to want to buy land and develop something if that happens.
Right.
And so I tried to steer him away from that. Okay, if you don't have any of that and you just want to look at a piece of property, you want to say, "This is an industrial site that we have." How do you go about that? And pretty much, I think their discussion was pointed to the west. And that was one of the things that came out of that meeting, that it's very important somehow, some way, that we come up with some money to get water and sewer on the other side of 57. And again, I apologize because in the early nineties, we could have done that for really cheap. And we didn't do it.
Right now, it's a thousand dollars a acre just to get that cement.
Yeah.
Before the pipes are even put in.
And I could kick myself because we could have, we could have done it. And I think there was actually some grant money that might have been available at that time. Donna, Donna remembers that. I mean, your dad, she, she could tell the story about her dad wanting to lay pipe under 57 when they were building it, just so that it was there.
That's when it should have been done. It's water under the bridge, so we've got to work that.
Right, right.
We've got to move forward.
Right. But, you know, if we could do that, and it, it always comes down to money.
Yeah.
So, you need to try to find something. We need to try to lean on our, on our, on anybody that we can, I guess. Grants, politicians, whomever. We've got an awful lot of land that is suited for that type of development. And we do believe that, looking at the comprehensive plan, especially when we were looking at the Iliana this, just recently, you know, a lot of that development is to the west.
Any questions for Gary?
How often do you meet once a month?
Once a month.
Oh, okay.
We do have a couple of people that are going to be out of town in June, so it's very possible that we'll just cancel that EDAC meeting and that'll give us a little more time to get some thoughts together and-
Do you have an empty position on that floor now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Actually, if you look at when that was established, that can be anywhere from five to nine members, I believe.
And how many is there now?
We have, we have, we have four. Just recently, we lost Dawn English, but I understand that she's still here. I don't know if she, you might want to talk to her, see if she's still, she was good. If not, we might want to entertain the idea of finding someone, someone else in the bank. Because that was something that was good. I mean, once we get to the point where we actually have something-
Right.
Then, I'm looking forward to that point to say, "Okay, bankers."
Yes.
"How do we do the financing? How do we keep it all in town?" You know? And then, of course, having Steve Stein on it, it's just fantastic because you, you get that whole school side on everything that you talk about. We just need more to talk about.
Who else is on your committee, Gary?
Um, I can give you the list here. It's Bob Rattamaker, Roy Huckkey, Steve Stein, and Tammy Hoffman, and myself. So, we, we could definitely use a couple more people.
So can you keep us apprised when your meetings are so, you know, if we're available? They'd love to come.
They are typically the third Wednesday of the month.
At six.
At six o'clock.
Here?
Yes. And, yeah, it would be great. Anybody, obviously, anybody is welcome to come.
So are you going to follow up with Steve in regards to that contact that he had? Or was he going to get back to you?
As far as the industrial guy?
Yes.
Um, I haven't talked to him since that meeting.
Okay.
I guess I was kind of waiting for this to see if there's any other ideas, as well as the other committee members are kind of- as the other committee members are kinda wondering where we're gonna go from here moving forward, or if we're gonna disband or what we're gonna do.
I definitely like, I definitely like the idea of getting the list, you know, starting to approach those property owners and then working with the committee, you know, to generate ideas, you know, for that list of properties. I mean, I think that's a good step. And I do wanna continue to look at that industrial, you know, aspect of it and looking at water to the other side of I-57.
Yeah.
Just to try to get an idea, get our, you know, arms around what we're looking at, you know, as far as a dollar figure goes.
Well, and that's just...
Because there are recaptures. I mean, I think that was always the...
Right, right.
Kind of the thought process.
If you can put in the money to do it, you can recapture it later, depending on, you know, how much money you have to spend and how much, how long later is.
Right, exactly.
But it's not really any cheaper, like we know, you know? So we might as well...
No, it's gone up a lot in the last 20 years.
Right, so we might as well come up with a plan and do something instead of wish we had done it before, you know?
Right. And, I mean, it's a no-brainer. That's where the growth is gonna be. So, you know, we can, we can keep going down that road. If you guys have any thoughts or anything, you know, please contact me, you know, until we have an administrator. And I assume when we do get an administrator, that that person will be involved at those meetings.
Absolutely, yes.
And that would be good because that's really, that's really what we count on to be the communication from there to here, you know? I mean, you can read our minutes and you're gonna just, you're not gonna get too much out of it unless you're at the meetings.
Good. Well, I appreciate, and I know the board appreciates all of your hard work and all of the committee's hard work, and don't give up.
Yeah, well, you know, we hit a point where it's like, okay, we need some professional help here. And so, you know, then it's a question of, do we need to hire somebody? But, you know, then it needs to come back. Then that's the advisory part.
Correct.
It comes back to you guys. Here's what we think. We need to find this person. I mean, it was very simple to talk to the planner and just kinda kick it off and use his expertise to get it going. But now, you know, we really need to go beyond that. What do we really need to do, you know? And we also probably need to meet with Robinson Engineering. When you start talking about site selection, I think they would have a lot of thoughts on what would be suited best for that. Because you know you're gonna need water.
Right.
And sewer, you know, wherever that site will be. So, very good.
With the Indiana Committee, one of the things that came out of there, when I was on the committee, was the community app. Do we know where that stands?
No, I'm looking for that file right now.
Okay. I know we had interest from the school and the park and other organizations to get rolling on that, so...
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Just a final note, Main Street Dance is having their show this Saturday. If anybody wants to go, I've got passes with my name on it, please come. It's down at Bradley Riverdale High School at 1:00 and 6:00 o'clock. And it's amazing, we got some pretty talented kids that have been dancing with us for seven or eight years, and it's kinda neat to see. So I'll lay these over here, anybody that wants them.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, guys.
Good evening. My name is Virginia Gates-Hammon. Many of you know me. I'm, do not live within a village. I live out in Piattown Township. I'm here as president for No Iliana for Us. We are the grassroots organization that has been diligently fighting against the Iliana since the day we all got letters. Personally, it would destroy both properties in our family. It would destroy the property where my husband and I and my son live, as well as destroying our business, which is the dairy farm on the east side of town in Will Township. We reside in Piattown Township. The dairy farm is in Will Township. The reason I'm here tonight is there's been a lot of changes with the Iliana. With the new governor, we have some hope that maybe there can be an end to this Iliana and possibly the airport, and maybe the residents of this area can get back to living their lives instead of being victims and held victim to the state of Illinois. For Piattown Airport, those people have been on the hook for 30 years. We haven't been quite as long with the Iliana, although it was fast-paced. The new governor, as you know, has put the Iliana and the airport with his executive order in January. He has put all infrastructure, major infrastructure projects on hold. In the listening tour that's been going on that just ended this past week, the governor had, Randy Blankenhorn, the new direct, the appointed director of IDOT, he has not officially been confirmed yet, he's the acting director of IDOT. He was formerly the director of CMAP. He, there was 39 different meetings. I think he told me, I personally was at a meeting last Monday, I think, was that the day, the Monday before? On the 11th of May, I was at the local 150 Hall in Countryside. And he said, out of the 39, he hoped to attend somewhere between 30 and 33 of the meetings himself. In attending that meeting, the state's number one concern for infrastructure that came directly from him was, I'm sorry, somebody asked him what the number one concern was, and he said the number one concern was public safety and maintaining existing infrastructure. Well, as we all know, dragging around the area, we've got a lot of needs here, although they've been kinda diligent in trying to paint everything black here recently. What has been happening from the grassroots point of view is, as you know, the Iliana does not directly go through any Village of Piattown property. It all go, the only village that it goes through is part of Wilmington. Aside from that, oh, in Village of Somerton, I'm sorry.
Did they not adjust that for Wilmington? I thought they pushed it out a little bit.
Well, they say they pushed it out. You know, one, one meeting, they say they, they changed it. The next meeting, you go to, you look at the map, and it's the same way.
We saw like three or four different maps.
Yeah, there's three different maps. One goes through my, personally, and one goes through my living room, the other one goes just behind my buildings, and then the other one goes just to the north of my property. So you don't know which one to believe because it was almost like they were just trying to appease people, so they were changing things. But then, when it came down to it, the map was the same as the meeting before, and the meeting before, and the meeting before. What has been taking place, which was a very instrumental, the governor has stated that he will not kill this project on financing alone. When they fought the Prairie Parkway up northwest of here, one, it was kinda the same thing. It went through a lot of township property. The townships banded together and they passed resolutions against the Prairie Parkway. The same thing has been taking place in the corridor of the Iliana. West Creek Township in Indiana has passed a resolution against...
I printed out all of the resolutions that you said.
Do you have them, otherwise? I did bring a copy.
I printed them all out, and all the trustees have.
Okay. Washington Township, we do have a meeting to attend, and we are in conversations with getting them to pass a resolution. As of right now, we're only missing three of the townships. Washington Township, Wilton Township, and Wilmington Township. We're on the agenda to speak to all of them. The reason I'm here tonight, and I asked, I spoke with Steve and I asked him, he did not know, can anybody tell me, it's my understanding that the Village of Piattown has a resolution in favor of the Iliana?
And I, I got that after I spoke with you.
So it is true?
It is, it was adopted, uh, what's the date? August 27th, 2012. And it was a resolution in support of alternatives, B3, B4, for the Iliana Expressway, and amending Resolution 12-R10, which was the first resolution that was passed in July of 2012.
Well, the reason I'm here tonight, and I had a very strong feeling, I was almost positive that you guys did have a resolution because of the fact that every time I've gone to Sears Tower, to the CMAP, and the NPO Policy Committee meetings, the former village president, Duran, was up there saying how it was gonna bring such great economic development to Piattown, how it was gonna be so good for the citizens. However, and here's a, here's a copy, you can pass it around. That's a copy of the petition that we have against the Iliana, that we did deliver, earlier this year, we delivered over 14,856 signatures, off the top of my head, that's the number, there's six in my head, it might be a little bit off, opposed. The majority of your village residents have signed that petition against it. So it was kind of infuriating when we were up there speaking to try to defend our properties, our businesses, our way of life, to see the village president of Piattown up there saying how it was gonna be so great for Piattown, yet in his tenure, I've seen a whole lot of business closed in Piattown. And the Iliana is gonna do far from bringing economic development. It's going to divide and sever your community. Just because people don't live within the village limits doesn't mean they're not part of Piattown, that they don't attend the school district, that they're not supported by the fire department, ambulance service. Sometimes the police department will come out until Will County can get there. It will divide and sever and destroy businesses. When speaking at the NPO Policy Committee, and I'll pass these around, these are some of the fact sheets about the Iliana. When speaking at the NPO Policy Committee, former secretary of IDOT, Ann Schneider, stated how it was going to create 854 or 874 long-term jobs, okay? We asked her, we said, how many jobs will it destroy? We're a small family farm, we're dairy farmers. We have seven people that rely on our small family farm for employment. According to Mark Schneider, Will County Farm Bureau manager, the Iliana will affect between 300 and 350 small and large farms across Will County from Wilmington to the state line. By taking that number and taking it, multiplying it by seven, just as a low-end number, because you're bigger, the bigger the farm, the more people it requires. And that's just the farmers. That's not counting any of the other home businesses, or towing companies, or landscapers. There's, there's all kinds of businesses through the corridor. Just in the farming community alone, it will destroy over 2,100 jobs, and that's not counting any other business. So it was kind of flabbergasting to us how they're touting this project along with the airport as a jobs, jobs, jobs project, when in reality, it's just a votes, votes, votes project and manipulation by politicians that don't reside anywhere near here. Because you all know, when they redistrict the legislative map, we kinda lost the representation we had for the rural community, and we now have Chicago representation. In reality, will it put those people in Cook County that are out of work? Absolutely not. Will it put all of our small businesses and our way of life out of work? Absolutely. So what has been happening is all these townships have been passing resolutions against the Iliana because that presented to the governor is a unified voice across the corridor that just because somebody's saying it's good, we live here, we work here for generations, and we say we don't want it, which is a strong message to the governor and was extremely instrumental in stopping the Prairie Parkway. So what I'm here tonight to ask you is, would the board and the new village president, would you guys be willing to entertain a motion to reverse your resolution and instead, you know, write a resolution opposing the Iliana? As a lot of your, and so, and so in these resolutions, you'll see there's one from Elwood. Now, Elwood is not directly in the path, however, they're strongly impacted. And in our conversation with the governor and with Randy Blankenhorn, we have gave them alternatives. We all live out here, and they're like, oh, this is, this is the way to go, this is the way to go. In the first place, there's not a truck, any trucking industry that's gonna pay the amount of money to drive 47 miles. It's a number between $33 and $47 to drive a 47-mile road one way. For a car, it's supposed to be $11 one way. I've heard people say, well, my wife can get to work faster. Where do you live? Well, I live in Green Garden, and my wife needs to go to Wilmington. Interesting. I find that very interesting. There are alter, if you've lived out here, some of the alternatives we've raised to the governor and director of IDOT is adding some turn lanes here and there. Perfect example, I'm driving my school bus, because I work for the school district, I'm driving my school bus home down 45, and you've already, if you're familiar with 45 between Joliet Road 52 and Piattown Wilmington Road, and further on south, that, the shoulders are paved. So back years ago, when 45 was in such terrible condition, people were actually using the shoulders because the roadway was impassable, and it wasn't until some poor woman lost her life out there that they managed to fix it. But in looking at that and approaching the intersection at Piattown Wilmington Road and 45, it's kind of a no-brainer that they could add a turn lane north and south with minimal cost and minimal effort because you've already got it paved, they might have to, you know, check the base underneath the shoulder area. However, the state already has that right of way. It would not cost that much for the state to add a turn lane here and there. And it's simple, some of the simple alternatives such as that, we've also talked to them about, when I was at the 150 Hall entertaining, that they make an exit out of the Intermodal at Center Point to tie it into Hobo Avenue, because most of your truck traffic is going north and northeast. So they're wanting to access I-80. Nobody in the, no trucker is going to come, they say 10 miles, but it's, everybody knows that the Iliana is far more than 10 miles south. It's anywhere from 15 to 20 miles south of I-80. So drive 15 to 20 miles south to pay to drive 47 miles east to then drive another 15 to 20 miles north. It's not economically viable. And the P3 that they're touting for the financing, if anybody saw the Crane's report about the Fitch Report that Governor Quinn conveniently forgot to tell anybody about until Brett Chase from the Better Government Association uncovered the fact that Governor Quinn had already spent a minimum of $112,000, possibly owing them up to $125,000. They were asking for a report to see if the Iliana was economically and financially viable for the TFIAM federal funding, which that funding, has it not gone out? That funding is in the process of running out until they would pass something new. But the report came back that in fact, oh, well, it wasn't going to be viable, and it wasn't going to be eligible for this TFIAM funding. However, Governor Quinn neglected to report that to CMAP, to the legislators, and to the taxpayers, thus making... CMAP, to the legislators, and to the taxpayers, thus making it evident that it's going to be the taxpayer, it's going to be every taxpayer sitting in this room, it's going to be every taxpayer from the Wisconsin border on south to the Kentucky border, and from east to west. It's going to be every taxpayer in the state of Illinois is going to be on the hook for the number that seems to always be changing. Right now, I think they're at $1.5 billion. However, I have a hard time believing that number at all, because I was at a meeting before your resolution was passed. It was actually 12:12:12. It took place out at the Will County atrium. It was put on by the Will County Farm Bureau, hosted it. And it was any Farm Bureau member that would be directly or indirectly impacted by the Iliana. There was a panel that night, Farm Bureau members, IDOT panel, and Illinois Farm Bureau Legal was also there. And there was a gentleman stood up, and he said, John Keefner stood up actually that night, and he said, "I've got a question for you," he says in his exact words, "How much is this damn road going to cost anyhow?" His exact words. And the gentleman from IDOT took the microphone, and he said, "26.7 billion dollars." And we all looked at one another, and we laughed. And that gentleman was seen at one morning after that, and then he just disappeared. Because I think he spit out a number that's probably more honest. When you start looking at the state's numbers on how much a mile of road costs, in fact, there was an article in the Kentucky Journal over the weekend, and it said how much one mile of road would cost. And if you start doing the math, and then you start doing the math on all the bridges, and overpasses, and off-ramps that they need, I think that number's probably closer to the truth. So will the Iliana bring economic development to Peatown? I doubt it.
Well, and as I told you, you know, in our phone conversation, my thought on the Iliana is the same as my thought on the airport always was. Opposed for, doesn't matter, we've got to be part of that planning process.
Absolutely.
We've got to protect our interests as a village.
Absolutely.
And I know that in the past, we'd passed resolutions opposing the airport. I believe that was the last thing that was done as far as the airport goes. It's up to the board. The board wants to take a look at the resolution that's on the books. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to see this, so I'll make sure all the board members, you know, get a copy of it. If you want to bring this, you know, back for a discussion as far as doing a different resolution, that's up to the board.
I'd like to bring it back for the next committee, the whole.
I will tell you this, when we were first approached about this, I was part of that board there for the report. We were promised, I guess is the right word to use, exits and entrances onto 57, right next to Peatown, onto 50, hence your growth. Later on in the conversations after the resolution was already in effect, that was kind of glossed over. Is it going to happen? Is it not going to happen? They couldn't give us a concrete answer anymore.
I think that's why they...
Correct.
There was a one passed July the 23rd.
Yes.
And then there was a revision passed in August, and I think the revision was, be it also, pardon me?
Yeah.
Yeah, and be it also resulted, the president, the board of trustees of the village of Peatown support and strongly encourage the design and construction of an interchange at the intersection of Illinois Route 50.
However, at the last meeting I was at, there's not going to be an interchange at about 50. The only interchange there's going to be is at I-57. And all you've got to do is travel the distance. There's not enough room. There's not enough room for them to construct it, unless Kevin's family wants to give up all of their land. I mean, and it's not just Kevin's family, it's all the residents. You know, Peatown's a great community. It's a great, has great potential. Is the Iliana the answer for it? I don't believe so. And if the board is going to entertain bringing this back up and possibly changing it, I had this conversation with Steve. Right now, time is of the essence because of the fact that Governor Rondar and IDOT Director Randy Blankenhorn have stated that hopefully by the beginning of July, the end of June, they're hoping to make a decision on this. The last meeting we have scheduled, I believe is on the 9th of June, is Wilton Center Township. They have, I did the same thing, I sent them the resolutions. I spoke with their clerk, actually, and she talked to the supervisor. They have put me on their agenda for presentation and action. So if the board is willing to open up a dialogue to possibly change this resolution, if there's any way you can have a meeting, when would your next meeting be? If there's any way you can have a meeting?
It'd be the second Monday.
We were hoping to have everything wrapped up by the 9th of June, just because time is of the essence right now. And this is really a strong message to the governor, so he understands that contrary to everything Governor Quinn was feeding him, the truth of the matter is that everybody that lives in the corridor, the townships, the villages that touch, you know, butt up to the corridor, they don't feel safe.
Our next board meeting is June 8th. Our next committee, the whole meeting is June 22nd.
Right.
But we could have a committee of the whole meeting prior to that board meeting, but then we wouldn't. If the board wanted to adopt a resolution, a change of the resolution, I don't, we probably wouldn't have that resolution ready for that meeting, but we could. The board could, you know, make the statement that they were willing or looking at adopting that resolution. So is that, would the board like to have a committee of the whole meeting before the next regular village board meeting on June the 8th?
Yes.
June the 8th.
Is that what you guys want to do?
Yes.
Okay. So we will schedule a committee of the whole meeting for June the 8th, have a discussion, and we'll also have it as an agenda item at the regular board meeting that night, not necessarily maybe to adopt the resolution itself, but to give direction, if the board so chooses, to have that resolution written for adoption at the next meeting. Does that make sense?
Is there any information, I will plan on attending that meeting in case there's any other questions. Is there any other information as a board or as a village president that, any other information that you might desire?
You've done your homework.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I do believe, and again, I just want to reiterate, you know, even if we, even if the board adopts a resolution in opposition to it, that doesn't mean we're going to close our eyes.
Oh, absolutely. You won't have any of the other townships or villages that have passed these. However, they want it on record that while we're being part of the process, it doesn't mean we're in favor of it. However, as a board, you know, whether it's a township board or a village board, I mean, whether it's a supervisor or a president, you know, your job is to protect the...
We'll allow the board to have that discussion.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We've got a couple minutes left. Does anybody have...
My name is Joe Price, I'm a villager, isn't it?
Okay.
And I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
First of all, a couple of years ago, we talked about putting a sidewalk into Gaughan Landings. It's the only place that's not accessible by foot or bicycle in Peatown. It's like it's a subdivision or a village all by itself. And there was some talk about that, and that was two years ago. Nothing much has happened, so I'd like to find out the status of that particular.
That is still...
Well, last year it was approved. This body approved the sidewalk. We're waiting on state grant funding. It was $100,000, and we were matching $50,000.
Here, I got Troy, Troy the Village Engineer is coming up here. He can kind of maybe answer that question. We had, I had this discussion with Troy the other day, but if you want to throw you in the hot seat here, we're talking about the sidewalk, Gaughan Landing on Wilmington Road.
There was a grant, the village was awarded a grant for that a year or two ago. And it took a while to get it approved, and they made us do some environmental clearances over the winter, which we did. And they said, "Thank you," and that's the last we heard from them. So we're just waiting to find out if the grant is still in the route.
So the answer is no one knows?
The answer is that it's being followed, and we're waiting for information to come back from the state on the grant.
All right.
So it is being pursued. It is something that we want to happen.
The other question's regarding the junior high school. I noticed that I bicycle there all the time, and it's been one-way for a number of years going into the junior high school. But there's no signs on Garfield, and there's no signs on the school district property indicating the fact that it's one-way. So people are turning around, and they're going out what I would call the entrance. Is that now a two-way street?
It is not a two-way street.
It's not going to.
The street in front of the junior high is owned by the school. That's not a village street.
And I believe before they did the paving projects, the signs weren't there, weren't they?
Yeah.
So it's just a fact they haven't put back up.
Okay, well, those need to be put back up because there's people going out that goes into...
We'll contact the school. We'll contact the school and make sure those signs get put back up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Mike Brown. I live over on Gene Street over in the Meadows. Mine seems pretty small compared to what's here. If the board would entertain looking into putting three minimum one-stop signs at the T intersection. I live at the T intersection of Gene and Ethel.
Okay.
And everybody just flies around those corners and up and down the street. My dad brought it up when I was, that was my daughter sitting with me, sorry, when I was her age, about the same thing, and it just kind of vanished. I got two kids now, and obviously, you know, it's the parents' fright, or it's the parents' job to watch their kid, you know, in the road, blah, blah, blah. But still, in our community, our subdivision, there's all the little kids that are around the block that ride their bikes on the sidewalk, cross the road, what have you. And the cars don't abide by, you know, in a subdivision like that, it was 20 miles an hour.
25.
25, yeah. Obviously, I don't have radar gun, but they're every bit of more than that.
So you're talking Gene and Ethel.
Right. At the intersection of Gene, the key intersection of Gene and Ethel.
What we'll do is we'll have the police committee take that up with the chief at their next meeting, which is on June the 10th.
11.
11.
Mayor, I brought this up to George two weeks ago when Mike contacted me about it. And he told me that they've done traffic studies there before. He said it's never warranted a three-way stop sign.
Okay.
But, maybe this will go to the attorney, he said, "We are able to just put up yield signs." You know, you can't put up a stop sign unless the traffic study allows you to. But he said, "We should be able to put up a yield sign." Is that something we can do? I mean, even if we do it now until the traffic study's done again?
Mm-hmm.
Just to bring it up to the local people now.
I don't see any reason why we would be denied that, but I don't know if they require a study for yield or not. I can tell you quickly, I'm going to go look at my manual, but...
A yield sign, I believe, is just kind of goes off of engineering judgment, or a stop sign, yeah, there are certain warrants need to be met for a number of cars on each street.
I mean, it's never a lot of cars. It's the same.
Really, a stop sign is not meant to slow cars down. There's maybe other ways we can do that. It usually tends to speed them up with acceleration and...
Either way, it's a T intersection, there's nothing.
Right.
So I think if anything, we need to put at least a yield sign on Gene Street or Ethel, one of the other.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and take a look. We'll let the committee take a look at that and talk with the chief, and find out if we have to do anything as far as the traffic study goes. But if not, then we'll move forward, at least with that yield sign until we...
Yeah, it's not so much Ethel. I mean, Ethel's a pretty short street.
Yeah.
But Gene is from one end, Gene to the other. It's just, you know, open air.
Your last name, Mike, I'm sorry?
Brown.
Do you have to have a traffic study for a sign in town on first stop sign?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vincent, I'll give you five minutes, because we're already into the regular village board.
Well, I can do it in two.
What's that?
First time you're Iliana. Years ago, I served on CMAP before they changed. Will County only had one delegate. All the rest were from Lake to Page, Cook, and the other. I can tell you this, you've got to watch out for Will County. Same thing on the airport. They'll give you one mouth out not to promote it, but on the other hand, they do promote it. They want the business. And there's about 15 of those board members that vote for it. So you can't take anything for nothing. Look at Anthony Rudis out here, who died at 100 a year ago January. He put in a half a million dollars and also gave 30 acres of land, trees in that Tulaiola University, to stop this damn thing. But the soon day after he died, his son sold the property to another person who immediately, within a month, sold all that acreage to the airport. And you've got out here, you've got security 24 hours around the clock. You've got office people, one, the executive director, just to watch over that property, and now you've got over 3,000 acres. She gets over $100,000 a year salary for sitting on her butt. So, I mean, it's not dead. I can't, as I told them a long time ago, I won't sign the death certificate on it, but I'm not going to want to get out of my eyesight. Gary has plenty of extra room over there, and I was there three times on television and with the Gary mayor and everything. They've also got the facility. And as of last week, United's been very kind to me. They sent out all my Christmas cards about 12 years ago. I didn't even know they did. But United Airlines and the other major airlines in Chicago want no part of this airport. And all you have to do is drive down to Muskuta. Yeah, we got a $400 million airport down there. Buses come every hour on the hour. Nobody gets on. And we've just had Pan Am and Virgin Airlines go out of there twice, and they quit. Now Scott Air Force Base, which is a joint that uses it a little bit for maneuvering. So you can't give up, but you got to watch out.
Oh, absolutely.
And the budget is being worked on today, and I'll tell you, Governor Rondar is going to get it right up there. Especially the day after he took away all the money from Medicaid, not all of it, but most of it, and all for 97 dialysis centers in the state of Illinois. These veterans and people are not going to take it. But let's look at that budget, which is due by midnight this Saturday. He promises to keep the legislators there all summer. What the heck does that mean? They get a per diem, they get housing, they get food. They're giving them more money to fight him. But the point is, I'm not saying Governor Rondar doesn't have good ideas and some things that have to be done. But watch out. There will be no money, no money given from the state of Illinois to Iliana. There will be no money given to the third airport, as was given $100 million a year just to look over them. Nobody steals the grass off out there. They've already stolen farms, houses, and everything else. And there's eight cases of eminent domain now in the Will County courts, and they are asking the appellate court, and the appellate court probably will dismiss it. That's all I got to say. Keep your eyes open, but keep your eyes in Springfield and Washington. By the way, the federal government just gave two more years for improving infrastructure in the towns and villages. Gave two years of funding, which would have ended this year in June, and we better go after it, because Illinois is going to get some. And unless your friend Azarelli or P.G. Farrell, you don't get it. Look what Manquino got. That wasn't the worst piece of road at all through there. My God, they got roads all the way from out of town all the way through there, halfway down the Valles. You got to get through them. And you got to get to those contractors too, who have to let it fly. Thank you for letting me come.
No, thank you, thank you. Anybody else for the committee, the whole?
One quick thing that he reminded me of. That is one thing when we were talking about possibly some of the reasons, Chris brought up some of the reasons why you guys had entertained a resolution for it. That's just like Governor Quinn went around before the 2013 vote, and he handed out a bunch of grant money. And he promised Peatown $100,000 for a sidewalk that was supposed to go out here on Peatown Wilmington Road. However, you've never seen that grant money, have you? So the truth of the matter was...
So the truth of the matter was that that was just a sham for votes.
That grant, that grant still is alive, it just hasn't been...
It just hasn't transpired, and the money was never paid. And that's not how it was promoted.
No, I understand, I understand. I just was trying to clarify that that is still a project that hopefully will move forward. All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole. Motion. Motion by trustee Hapke, seconded by trustee Hall.
Mr. Hapke.
Yes.
Mr. Forsen.
Yes.
Mr. Galvez.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Hapke.
Yes.